I'd like to call to order the City of Elgin Planning and Zoning Commission for August 7th, 2023. Look to staff to please call the roll.
Commissioner Obwali?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Megala?
Here.
Commissioner Lopez?
Here.
And Chairman Cox?
Present.
We do have court.
Excellent. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from July 10th, 2023. Is there any discussion? If not, the Chair will entertain a motion for the approval.
I move to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second? That was Commissioner Jones.
A second.
Commissioner Obwali.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Obwali?
Yes.
Commissioner Megala?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
The minister approved, five to zero.
All right, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is my opportunity to welcome all of you here tonight. Hopefully you can hear me. Here, I'll welcome all of you here tonight. Those of you in the chambers with us, I always want to welcome my fellow commissioners, city staff here down front, working in the back, and those of you watching remotely. We've got three items on the agenda tonight, and we're excited that although we're already in August, we're still clicking along at the City of Elgin, and we're still hearing petitions. So that's a great thing. We'll hear each of these petitions coming up. So for those of you who are new with us tonight, see a lot of new faces, just wanted to briefly go through the process. Just so each of you know, when we open a petition, we first look to city staff, they'll give us their presentation, or he will give us his presentation, go through the staff report, look at the recommendations and conditions. We, as a commission, will ask questions of staff. Then we typically look to the petitioner team to come on up, and when I say come on up, we'll come on up to the lectern over here, introduce yourselves. If you can remember to give us your name, spell it, and address, it helps us. And then we will look forward to your thoughts. If there's anything you'd like to add or discuss, we love to hear it. Following that, we ask you to remain up here. Again, as a commission, we'll ask questions of the petitioner team, and once we're satisfied with that, we open each petition up to the public hearing portion, where those of you in the audience have the opportunity to come on up and tell us your thoughts. If there's questions, depending on distances and other things, we can also entertain those, and then if they're needed, we can ask the developer team to respond to those. Following that, we typically look back to staff, if there's anything additional that's come to mind that they'd like to illuminate us with. And when we're done, then we deliberate and take a vote as a commission. This commission is a recommending body to city council, so we pass our recommendations on, and if you are on the petitioner team, and if something or one of these petitions are approved, we can, you work with staff to find out what the dates would be for each of those upcoming petitions for city council. So having gone through the agenda, the thing I want each of you to know here tonight, I'm sorry, gone through the welcoming statement, each of you here tonight should just know that it's very, very important if you've got something to say, we definitely want to hear it, and tonight is your night for that. So now, what I meant to say was moving forward with the agenda. For those of you who will be testifying tonight, if you could, please stand and take the oath from the court reporter that can help due process. Thank you. Even if you think you might, we encourage you to stand.
[inaudible]
Thank you. All right. So as we said, we've got three items on the agenda. The first one is for 1150 North McLean Boulevard, petition 19-23.
Thank you, Chairman Cox, and good evening, everyone. And we do have proof of proper notice on the first petition before you.
Thank you, sir.
This is the application by John Kayser of Cave Enterprises Operations LLC as the applicant, and JHGV LLC as the property owner, who requesting approval of a planned development as a conditional use with several departures from the Elgin Municipal Code to construct a second side-by-side drive-through service lane with some other site and building improvements at the existing Burger King restaurant located at 1150 North McLean Boulevard. And as usual, we'll start with the site location map. The subject property is approximately half an acre in size, indicated here in yellow. It is on the west side of North McLean Boulevard, approximately one-quarter mile north of Big Timber. All surrounding properties are also Zone AB, area business district, commercial classification. To the north, as you can see, is the Taco Bell Restaurant. To the west, adjacent to this property, is a multi-tenant office building, sort of a commercial building. The common address is 1140 North McLean Boulevard, and I'll reference this building several times. And then across North McLean Boulevard is the Tyler Creek Plaza North Shopping Center, that includes two outlots, two restaurants, Jester's Fast Food, and then Big Skillet Restaurant. And then to the south is the vacant two-story commercial office building that was formerly Chase Bank. Here's a bird's-eye view of the subject property. As you can see, it is improved with a one-story commercial building that's home to Burger King. The building is approximately 3,350 square feet. It does have one drive-through service lane that starts on the east side of the site. Let's try this. So this is a bird's-eye view looking west, so this would be the east side of the restaurant, one service lane. It wraps up onto the north side of the building where the pickup window is on the north side. The property shares the existing parking lot with the 1140 North McLean property in the rear. There's a total of 106 parking spaces on the entire site, and these two properties actually share a parking lot with this larger building along Big Timber and the Popeyes Restaurant to the south. Overall, there's a total of 260 parking spaces shared amongst the four properties. So the applicant is proposing several building and site improvements specifically to allow for the second drive-through lane that would be side-by-side next to the existing one. The site improvements include the removal of the existing outdoor patio that's east of the building to accommodate the second service lane that would be between the existing one and then the building to remain. The applicant, the two drive-through service lanes would be 11 feet wide, which does not meet the 12-foot requirement. That's one of the departures that's requested. Thus, the new additional drive-through service lane will result in the loss of three parking spaces on site. However, with that, the property would still have a total of 19 parking spaces on the Burger King sites, and then 103 parking spaces in the shared parking lot with the property to the west. The applicant has agreed to continue to have an outdoor seating patio that will be relocated from the east side of the building down to the south side, next to the main entrance of the building off of the parking lot. The building improvements are substantial. It would include all-new facade, primarily masonry, brick masonry that would be painted, and then fiber cement cladding on all sides of the building. Here you can see the south and the east elevations, that would be sort of public-facing. As you can see, the outdoor patio would be enclosed with a three-and-a-half-foot-high aluminum decorative fence that would also include these masonry columns at the corners. And the building would have new signage. They are a total of four wall graphics proposed, the one on the south, there's two on the east, and then one on the north. This would be the north elevation. Existing building has three pickup windows currently, and then the proposal would also have the three pickup windows. The proposal is required to meet, well, I should say that the applicant has agreed to eliminate two pylon signs, one along North McLean Boulevard, and one that's actually down by Big Timber. Instead, they will install one monument sign that would be generally in the same location right here. It would be code compliant. So the proposal requires several departures from the zoning ordinance. The first one is the width of the stacking lanes that I mentioned. The code requires 12-foot-wide stacking lanes. They are proposing 11 feet simply because there's not enough space on site to accommodate the full width. Wall graphics, the city allows two total. They are proposing four. This is similar to other restaurants in the city where the city has accommodated additional signage on the building because these properties have shared access to the shared parking lots and additional visibility is needed for traffic approaching the site from north and south. Similar departure for the signage was granted to specifically Culver's Restaurant that's across the street, and then some other restaurants across the city along Randall Road. One of the wall graphics that is proposed would be sitting on the canopy. The code requires that a sign on the canopy is actually on the face of the canopy. In their case, the sign is sitting on top of the canopy. And then the proposed monument graphic that would replace that pylon sign does not meet the 20-foot setback from the intersection of driveway and the sidewalk. There, that sign would be approximately 16 feet. That's again because of the site constraints. In this case, there are no concerns with the proximity of this sign to that driveway because that north driveway is the inbound lane right here. So the sign is in this location right there. This is an inbound lane, so the location of the sign will not obstruct the view of any vehicles exiting the site at this location. So with that, staff has provided our overview of the standards in the packet, and staff believes that all applicable standards have been satisfied, and therefore staff recommends approval subject to the conditions of the packet. At this time, I'm happy to ask any questions, and applicant's team is here as well.
Thank you. I'll start on my right with Commissioner Lopez. You have any questions for staff?
No questions. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Megala?
None for me.
Commissioner Jones?
No questions, thanks.
Commissioner Obwali?
No questions.
All right, I don't have any questions for you. Thank you. All right, as promised, if you're on the developer team for this petition, come on up.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is John Kayser, J-O-H-N-K-A-Y-S-E-R, address 1624 West 18th Street, Chicago, Illinois. I am the applicant. I'm with Cave Enterprises. I also represent the owner. It's our development entity, so we own the property, and we also operate the property. Cave Enterprises is a Burger King franchisee. We're about 25 years old. We're a family business. We purchased this restaurant from the previous operator, Bill Gill, back in 2019, and our intentions at that time were to remodel the restaurant upon acquisition, along with a few other restaurants that we acquired from him. He retired. And then the pandemic happened. Things got delayed, so we're finally here before you with this proposal. We're excited about it. The restaurant's been there a long time. Its image is outdated, to say the least, so we're bringing it up to current brand standards. We're bringing it up to current accessibility standards. And then adding that double drive-through is just a big bonus for us. And I think in terms of traffic flow, it just conveys traffic a lot, you know, in a lot more efficient way, takes some of the congestion out of the parking lot, removing the outdoor patio seating into a more prominent position away from the drive-through. The position of the patio previously just was, I guess, less than ideal. We worked pretty extensively with DeMire, very thorough compliments to him and his team, but we did go through a pretty extensive review process in order to make sure that we were satisfying all of the requirements from the municipality. And I think we did, you know, we accomplished that. We also accomplished our objectives. I'm here to answer any questions beyond that, and then Tom is our architect. He could kind of do a brief summary as well. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Tom Savoca, T-O-M-S-A-V-O-C-A. I'm with MRV Architects. We are the architects doing the drawings for this project. I think DeMire hit a lot of the things. We're just updating to Burger King's latest standards by putting in a double drive-through, removing the existing patio seating, making room for that double drive-through to have a more smoother flow through the site. And landscaping, new landscaping where the new drive-through equipment will be. We've also worked with DeMire to bring our lighting into conformance. We're proposing all-new lot lighting and exterior building lighting. Pretty much everything else, DeMire hit on. If you guys have any questions, we're here.
All right, we appreciate that. We'll take the opportunity, and I'll start with Commissioner Obwali.
No, it was pretty thorough. No questions.
Commissioner Jones?
Just out of curiosity, what's the difference for your inside dining versus drive-through, like a guest-to-mat percentage of, and how do you anticipate that'll change with two drive-throughs?
The business kind of changed a little bit in terms of our percentages. I mean, historically, going back, you know, years ago, it was, the mix was typically like 50/50. Over the last few years, we've seen it kind of shift to, you know, 60/40, and then depending on the location, I don't have the exact statistics for this site.
No, of course.
But it's in that range, yeah. So we did reduce the size of the dining room. There was a kind of an old funky atrium from the 1980s that's going away, thankfully. They tend to leak after a few years and not look so nice. So it's a good point. We don't have the seating needs on the inside that we used to. And we're doing a full interior remodel as well, you know, the bathrooms, dining area, you know, service area, et cetera. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, absolutely. And I was a little sad to see the pylon sign going. I think it's a good wayfinding opportunity, but...
Well, we had to meet the current ordinance, so, yeah.
Yeah. Good luck. It looks like a great project.
Thank you.
Commissioner Megala?
No questions, just a comment. I thought it was a pretty thoughtful redesign. I really liked moving the patio to the south entrance. All done? Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
No questions. Thank you.
All right, I don't have any questions for you either. Appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right, as promised, now is the time when we open this petition up to public comment. So if there are those of you in the audience who would like to comment, and DeMire's checking the sign-in sheet. There's no names on the sign-in sheet, but that doesn't mean you can't come on up if you'd like to weigh in on this petition. All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion and look back to staff. If you'd like to add any additional thoughts or comments.
Nothing further to add. Staff recommends approval subject to the conditions.
All right. So then, at this point in time, the Chair would entertain a motion for this petition, which is 19-23.
Chairman Cox, I recommend we approve petition 19-23, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report, and also adopt as our findings of facts those proposed in staff's report.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Megala?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Obwali?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
The motion is approved, five to zero.
All right, gentlemen, as said before, this will go forward to city council, and you can work with DeMire. There's typically two dates that these petitions are heard, and he'll give you those dates. Thanks. All right, we'll give DeMire a moment to shift here now. The next petition's for 70 National Street, petition 05-22. We see those 22 or year-prior numbers lingering sometimes. Things take a while to get to us, and we know there's a lot of work that goes into it. So tell us all about it, please.
Okay, so, and again, we do have proof of proper notice on this one, and the petition number actually is 2023. That was an error on the agenda page. Apologies for that.
No worries.
So the, this application is by Will Otter from Sibley Austin LLP as the applicant, and ComEd as property owner, who requesting approval of a planned development as a conditional use with departures from the Elgin Municipal Code requirements to construct security enhancements to the existing ComEd substation, including a seven-foot-high chain-link fence with one-foot-high Y-shaped barbed wire on top, new outdoor lighting, and other security improvements at the property commonly known as 70 National Street. So again, we'll start with the location of the property. This is a 1.5-acre property that's outlined in yellow. As you can see, the property is located on the west bank of the Fox River, directly across from the Grand Victoria Casino. The access to the property is from National Street to the south, so the address is there for 70 National. We'll try to pointer again. So the access to the property is down here, off of National, up the driveway. So the property is home to the ComEd substation that is currently screened by a six-foot-high chain-link fence that also includes one-foot-tall barbed wire on top of that. As you can see, the properties surrounding the site are all the same green shade. That means they're all Zone CF, Community Facility District. The property is actually nestled between the two railroad tracks. To the east is the Metro Railroad tracks, and then to the west are the Chicago Northwestern tracks. To the south is the land owned by Metro, as well as to the north, the Elgin Downtown Train Station is further to the north. To the west is all, up, there's a substantial grade change here from the property that's close to the river, and then the grade kind of goes up towards State Street, and this property right here is the city-owned Central Park. Here's the bird's-eye view of the property looking west, and here's what that site looks like from the east side of the Fox River. So the applicant is proposing security enhancements. Those include replacing the existing chain-link fence, that, like I said, it's seven feet high, excuse me, six feet high plus one foot of barbed wire on top, with a seven-foot-high that includes a Y-shaped barbed wire on top. That fence would generally be slightly modified. The fence kind of goes out here. It would be moved about 50 feet to the south, and then this portion right here, north is to the left. So this would be the northeast portion of the site. The fence would be moved about 20 feet to the west. The site would include six posts, which are 15 and 16 feet high, that would serve to hold the fence, as well as some other security functions. They would have a new main gate that's on the southern portion of the, of this, would be the eastern fence line. They would also have a new manual gate on the north end of the fence, and then a new door and a new gate for personnel here on the south end. The improvements would also include new security lights. There will be two security lights on the building. There are two doors into this building on the site, one on the north side, and then one on the south side. There would be also one additional security light on a new 28-foot-high pole, generally in this location, that would only be triggered by motion activity. And then there are three other 28-foot-high poles that would be installed for additional light fixtures, that all of those would be illuminated only in case of emergencies. So that is it. The proposal requires several departures from the zoning ordinance specifically regarding the security fence. The maximum allowed fence normally is six feet high, and security fences can have no more than three strands of barbed wire on top of it, and those security-type fences require landscape screening. Their proposal, as I said, is a total of eight-foot-high fence that includes that one-foot Y-shaped barbed wire on top that includes six strands of barbed wire. And then they're not proposing any landscaping on the perimeter of the fence because the entire site is gravel surface, so landscaping would not be practical. Regarding the outdoor lighting that's installed, the code actually requires there's a certain level of minimum outdoor lighting on the site, and that would be 0.6-foot candles at any time. Their proposal is they have several parts of the site that would not be illuminated unless it's an emergency. The plan is only to have lights near the building entrances illuminated, and then everything else will be turned on in case of an emergency. So that would be the other departure, to have those zero-foot candles throughout the site. The application is required to meet the standards for planned developments and standards for conditional use. We have provided our analysis of the standards in a packet. Staff recommends approval subject to the conditions outlined in the packet. I'd be happy to ask any questions.
Thank you. I like how you say you'd be happy to answer any questions. We'll start with Commissioner Megala.
Nothing for me, thanks.
Commissioner Jones?
I, in our packet, it references some prior bad acts in other communities, gunfire-related, and you may not be, know the answer to this, but with the chain-link fence, is there other measures taken within the facility to prevent that? The chain-link fence doesn't seem like it would be the solution necessarily.
That would be a question for the applicant, and I think they're prepared to answer those questions.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Lopez?
No questions.
Commissioner Obwali?
No questions.
All right, I don't have anything for you. Thank you. All right, so at this point, we look for the petitioner team to come on up.
All right, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Marquis Sales, and I work with the City of Elgin as the External Affairs Manager for ComEd. And my business address, for the record, is 2001 Alcoa Road in Montgomery, Illinois. And as DeMire mentioned, we're here to talk about security upgrades at the substation located at 70 National Street just across the Fox River from the casino. And along with me here, I have Will Otter, our zoning attorney, that's going to get into some of the background and provide a little bit of an overview of the project. Chris Deutschler is going to go through some of the rationale behind the project and why we need to make these security upgrades. And then also, I have Brian Hutchinson, the project manager from ComEd, who's going to be managing the project. And then also Trevor McFadden from the SHIELD Engineering is here as well to address any questions that you guys might have. So I'm going to turn it over to Will now to get into some of the overview, and then we'll go from there. Will?
Thanks, Marquis. For the record, my name is Will Otter, O-T-T-E-R, of Sibley Austin LLP, business address of 1 South Dearborn, Chicago, Illinois. DeMire, we'll go to the next slide. And so I'm just going to give a very quick overview of kind of the big-picture reasons why ComEd is making the security upgrade, and then we'll let Chris Deutschler get into a little bit more of the details. So to start, ComEd is making these enhancements in order to secure critical infrastructure sites such as the substation. Obviously, substations are a key part of the electric grid, and with the new fence and associated upgrades, we're going to be giving the substation a higher deterrence value, and we're also going to be able to respond more quickly to incidents. And then ultimately, this all kind of goes towards electric reliability. Obviously, one of the first baseline provisions of electric reliability is protection of our substations. So additionally, ComEd is doing these substations, doing these upgrades to substations actually throughout its territory. This is in line with federal directives to secure critical infrastructure sites from physical attacks. So DeMire, if we would go to the next slide, you can see that this nationwide effort actually started in 2013 with a presidential policy directive following a particularly damaging attack at the Metcalf Substation in California, which we'll explain a little bit later. But then through the federal rule-making process, this eventually filtered in through the agencies. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, or FERC, told the North American Electrical Reliability Corporation, or NERC. So we got FERC and NERC. These two organizations came together to create a physical security standard. NERC oversees all of the electric public utility companies throughout the country, so it went to all of these companies and said that you now have to develop standards that support this goal. So that's exactly what ComEd's parent company, Exelon, did. Exelon did a risk assessment of all of its facilities, and then also came up with the... Exelon did a risk assessment of all of its facilities, and then also came up with the six standards below as kind of guiding principles for upgrading the security at the standard, at these substations. So the fence project today promotes the first three of those, the deter, delay, and detect. And I'm going to let Chris Deutler explain a little bit more in detail how that works with this specific substation, and also some of the incidents that we're trying to stop with this.
Christina Deutler, D-E-U-C-H-L-E-R. My address is 1919 Swift Drive in Oakbrook, Illinois. I'm going to give you a quick background, because I know you guys have some questions. So, former US Army retired police officer, City of Aurora, Nuclear Power Plant Security Manager, certified in the industry in SEPTED, Project Management, and as is as a protection professional. So I've been with ComEd Security as the Infrastructure Manager for almost seven years now. And like Will said, those are our overarching goals for securing our substation and complying with the federal directive, and if we can go to the next slide, I can explain a little more. So as Will referenced, back in Metcalf, California, there was a concentrated rifle-fire attack, gunshots, where they were able to pretty much effectively take down the substation. And we know this was a substantial attack, not only in damage, but in the planning, where they had scouted locations, they had been at the substation location several times, they had set up some rifle-firing positions, really done a lot of homework, cut some fiber-optic phone lines to avoid detection by the police or response by the police, and was able to take this station down. In fact, the nuclear power plant that had analog phone service still as a redundancy to their fiber-optic lines was able to contact the police when they heard the gunfire and got reports from their folks. So that was 2013. That's when we started all this. And then just recently, I know, you know, last year in the winter, we had these two attacks in North Carolina and Tacoma, which again are gunfire-related, and vandalized the substation, leaving folks without power. So this effort, while not directly related to stopping gunfire attacks, is, as Will said, building up the resiliency of the critical infrastructure right now. What I will tell you, and I'm going to just jump off the slide for a second, that we are in the process of reviewing drone detection and ballistics detection and hardening right now to prepare for a response to a federal initiative that tags onto this directive. So while this started in 2013 with a ballistic-style attack, the pattern hadn't been laid out yet, that they just are hell-bent on, you know, shooting the place up, you know? So that came 2013 on, and now we're, you know, getting prepared to see what we need to do from ballistics and a drone perspective. So, but right now, we're just trying to comply with the 2013 directive. So I wanted to, you know, so we talked about the national pattern and practice, but locally, we really haven't had yet a lot of sabotage activity. So I did list at the bottom what we've kind of seen in the last 12 months in this region, and some of the other suburban regions. I didn't even include the city of Chicago. We'd be here all night. So if you want to jump to the next slide. Some of this is actually Elmhurst Substation. Some of these pictures I'm going to show you. So these are events that we've come across here in this region, close to Elgin, where, and we've made changes based on, on some of the patterns, right? So digging under the fence, prying open the control building, removing all the ground bars, because they're really after the copper, cutting through the fence, and then at the bottom, right, you see some staged tools. So these guys were caught. So the purpose is, while I know it's a chain link fence, and I know it's barbed wire, there's technology that's going to be placed on this site, security technology that was never there before. And while there could be an argument made about really the effectiveness from a security perspective on chain link and barbed wire, it does afford a delay opportunity. So our technology has a better opportunity of picking them up before they actually get in and create a safety issue by removing grounding and removing items, because we, you know, have a concern, obviously, for the burglar, but also for the first responders, for the police and the fire, and the ComEd folks that would be coming there to help out. So we're trying to get as far in front of it as we can with, with some upgrades, technology and physically. Is there another slide? Oh, that is it. Questions?
All right, Will, I will start with Commissioner Jones. Questions for the petitioner team?
No, thank you. You answered it. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Magala?
A couple things. Go ahead and step there. Number one, I think somebody mentioned that there'd be a faster response time as a result of this. How so?
Yeah, so, like I said, this station in particular does not have technology, right? So the security technology involves motion tech detecting and thermal analytic cameras. So, and those cameras are some of the reason for some of those higher posts that we were talking about, and those will be concentrated on the interior of the substation at the fence line. So the more time they spend at the fence line, the faster we're going to be able to pick them up. And so we have a 24/7 command center for security that monitors these alarms. And so instead of a reactive, a reactive, you know, after-the-fact opportunity where we come the next day and see that the station's been broken into, we can actively in real-time monitor folks at the fence line on the interior of the station.
Okay. Why do you need a 20, was it 25-foot pylon for, for the lighting? Why so high?
This is a lighting question. I'm going to defer that. Yeah. Even the security lighting, I'm not the engineer.
My name is Trevor McFadden. My address, T-R-E-V-O-R-M-C-F-A-D-D-E-N, and my address is 400 North Main Street in Glen Ellyn, Illinois. Twenty, it's a 28, or it's a 25-foot pole on a three-foot foundation that acts as a bollard, and that's just ComEd standard. Does that answer your question?
Just, I guess it's also kind of related to the departure you guys are seeking with respect to, you know, zero-foot candles, instead of, you know, the ordinance requires zero and a half foot. So you're putting a really tall pylon, but yet you're not using it, and you're requiring a departure for, for, you know, darkness, essentially. I just don't understand why it's all related.
So the zero-foot candles are located at some of the perimeters of the fence. The main intent of the lights is to operate, or illuminate, critical equipment, and also pathways for personnel and vehicles to traverse the substation.
So it's only going to come on when needed, and otherwise it's going to be zero-foot? When it's a non-emergency situation, or?
There are two building lights, one on the north and one on the south, that operate, or they come on every single night. There is a single gate light that will come on at night, when also there's motion detected just outside of the gate, and then all the other lights inside the substation will be illuminated when a personnel goes inside and actually activates a light.
All right, so what's the purpose of the 28-foot? Is that for emergency purposes, or is that non-emergency?
It's general yard lighting, and also illuminating some of the critical equipment.
Okay.
And I'll just add to that, that there will be four 28-foot-tall poles. So the one, there will be one that's by the gate, and that's the main goal of that, is to illuminate the entrance gate, if personnel need to come in after dark for whatever reason. So that's just, that is one 28-foot-tall pole that's motion-activated by somebody coming up to the gate sensor. And then there are three other 28-foot-tall poles, which are specifically only for emergency situations, in which case we would actually turn them on. As far as zero-foot candles at parts of the substation, the, the idea with, with this is that we're trying to illuminate only the specific things that need to be illuminated. You know, with a 0.6 minimum for, for a property, that, that absolutely makes sense in a parking lot context, but typically, the substation is already dark, typically is at zero-foot candles already, and we're not going to be changing that. We're really just adding a few lights to illuminate certain things.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying on the poles. Nothing further.
Commissioner Lopez?
Nice fence. No questions.
Commissioner Abwali?
Have you guys been working on these improvements since 2013 in different substations and whatnot?
Yeah, so we, we started the program in 2017, and so part of the, just for some background, so part of the whole substation thing is, we went and tiered the substations. We went and tiered them in, in order of criticality to the grid, right? To the national grid and to the local grid. And so as we're moving through the tiers, starting in 2017 with the most critical to the, you know, the bulk electric system down to here, we anticipate being finished with this program, I think, in 2024. So we're kind of at the tail end here.
We're last on the list. No.
No. I won't say Woodstock or Crestwood.
Yeah, I definitely appreciate all the extra security measures you're taking, but, you know, like you said, most of your examples were bullets and whatnot. Did some of them get more precautionary measures?
No. So I will tell you that, right now, we have not designed, as far as this program, it does not deal with ballistics. It, not just the substation or this tier of substation, the program in 2013, and the position that Exelon took and presented back to the, the folks that audit us and, and check us, the federal folks, DHS, FERC, NERC, did not require that we do that. And so, but as we've advanced and the patterns emerged, they, we are anticipating they will be requiring us to do that, so we are actively looking at add-on features to what we've already done that would address ballistics, vehicle RAM, drone. You know, so we are looking to build on this. I don't know what that's going to look like yet.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I just have one question for you. In talking about the security system, it kind of brought to mind, we've had other types of development in Elgin, especially, you know, marijuana dispensaries or grow facilities, where there's integration into state police, as well as potential for local law enforcement. Is that potential, does that exist? Is that, or maybe this is a staff question, if you want to weigh in here, you certainly can too, but just curious where, where this goes down the road for integration with law enforcement.
So we have been approached by several law enforcement agencies about the ability to integrate their, our system into theirs. So basically, giving them the opportunity to view our cameras in real time, receive our alarms in real time. At this point, we have not acted on that. The information that, that you can get out of the security system is, is critical energy infrastructure information. So I don't think as a company, we've explored how that works. You know, it's federally protected information. We have the 24/7 Security Operations Center. They address alarms in real time. So if alarm was received here at Elgin, they pull up a site biography. It has the number of the Elgin Police, the Department of Homeland Security, the FBI region, and they start making phone calls. So that, that's what we have today, but we have been approached. It's not off the table. I'm just not, I think it'd be bigger than just me.
I was putting it all on you.
I, I wish I was that important.
No, I appreciate the response and, and understand, so. All right, that was my only question for this, for this group, so appreciate you all coming on up. All right, as before, see, Demir heading across the chambers here to check the sign-in sheet, but again, we can work our way across the room. Any of you who are with us tonight want to comment on this petition, now is your opportunity. All right, as always, people are either actively avoiding my, my glare or glance, or, or looking at their phones, so. All right, I don't see anyone coming on up, so appreciate that. We'll close the public hearing portion of this petition and look back to staff.
The application is required to meet the standards for planned developments and for conditional use. We believe that applicable standards are satisfied, and staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions of the packet.
All right. So as before, the chair will entertain a motion for this petition, which is 20-23.
I move to recommend that the city council approve petition 20-23, subject to the conditions outlined within our packet, and to adopt, as the findings of the commission, those findings also provided within our packet.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Abwali?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Magala?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 5-0.
All right, thank you. Thanks for coming this evening and availing yourselves our questions. All right, we will do a reset again for the last petition on our agenda tonight. Let's actually get a couple of different numbers, 21-23 and 24-23 for project out on Route 20.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Cox. The final petition before you, and again, we do have, we have provided proper notice on this one as well. The application is by Global Builders Incorporated as applicant and property owner, who is requesting approval of an amendment to the annexation agreement and planned development as a map amendment with departures from the Elgin Municipal Code to construct 64 townhomes with ten, within tent multiple-unit buildings with rear-loaded garages accessible for private alleyways, all at the property commonly referred to as 3271 U.S. Route 20. So the property in question is 4.9 acres in size. It is part of the former Meyer Farm that was annexed in 2005. On the left is the entirety of the Meyer Farm property that's sort of outlined in black. That was annexed for the West Point Gardens subdivision. That approval included, the entire Meyer Farm property is about 168 acres. That preliminary plat of that entire subdivision included a commercial portion that's about 18 acres, outlined here, that's just south of Route 20. And the subject property that's sort of in purple, that's five acres here indicated, is part of those, of those 18 acres that are currently zoned commercial, AB area business, or PAB, Planned Area Business District. The remainder of the West Point Gardens subdivision is close to being finalized. I think at the last meeting, we discussed the status of the final phase, which is this vacant site on the south end. The commission has approved that. It is, however, waiting on the applicant to submit the additional documents for the approval of that final plat, and so we, remains to be seen if they're going to move forward or not. As you can see, the subject property is surrounded by commercially-zoned land to the north and to the east. Those, those two vacant land, properties are part of the same PAB Planned Area Business District. To the south are detached single-family homes that are known as detached townhomes. They're known so because of their five-foot setback between the existing single-family homes. And then to the west are regular single-family homes that are zoned PSFR2, Planned Single Family Residence District. Those properties to the south and to the west are part of the West Point Gardens subdivision. Here is the bird's-eye view of the subject property that is looking west. So this site was approved back in 2014 for a senior living facility known as Elgin Memory Care. That building was going to have 80 units of senior living, various types of assisted living, memory care. That building was, construction of that building commenced in 2015. They put in the foundation and the detention facility. The detention for the facility was going to be in this sort of flag closer to Route 20. So the building was commenced, but it was never completed. And then in 2021, the city took the measures to remove the remainder of the, of the foundation, and then the site was restored, and it's currently vacant space, as you can see. So the applicant is proposing a 64-unit townhome development on the subject property. The, the units would be in tent, multiple-unit buildings. This would be a market-rate rental product, apartments, and the project requires the amendment to the existing annexation agreement, as well as the change to the zoning from PAB Planned Area Business District to PMFR, Planned Multiple Family Residence District. Here's the landscape plan for the proposed site. As you can see, all the buildings are oriented along existing streets. To the west is Shannon Parkway, south is Daisy Lane, and then to the north is a private drive that connects from Shannon Parkway out to Nestler Road on the far east end. So all buildings are oriented along the existing roadways or around the central courtyard, right here. The two buildings on the far east end, these are buildings seven and eight, are positioned so that they would, it's anticipated that the property to the east would have a north-south roadway, either private or public, that would connect from Daisy Lane to the private road and provide access to the commercial development that is anticipated along Route 20. As you can see, each unit backs up to a private alley. That alley would be for access to the attached garages, there would be, garages that would be on the first floor of each unit. That would be a two-car attached garage that would also, so the, each unit would have indoor, two indoor parking spaces. have indoor, two indoor parking spaces as well as two parking spaces on the driveway outside of the garage. So that is four parking spaces per unit, which satisfies the parking requirement of three parking spaces per unit. Each of these private alleys would be 18 feet wide with 14, or I'm sorry, four-foot public sidewalks on both sides of the, of the private alley. The alley would also include standard city street lights. The elevations, as you can see, the, the front elevation on the, on the top, the, the rear elevation on the bottom, and then this would be the typical side elevation. The buildings are well articulated. They include brick masonry as well as fiber cement siding on all elevations. Each unit would have an outdoor balcony, about 10, 10 by 7-foot balcony on the rear of the unit. And then, as you can see, the garage doors would have glass on the top, on the top of each garage doors. All of the units would be approximately 1,600 square feet in floor area. The, the community would have two models. They're very similar. The ground floor would have the entrance on the front, staircase leading up to the, to the upper levels. And then from the back would be the access to the two-car garage. It's a bit of bonus room on the ground floor as well. Then the first floor would have, excuse me, the second floor would have the living quarters, the living room, kitchen, and the dining room, as well as the access to the balcony in the back. And then the third floor would include the, the three bedrooms and, and two bathrooms. So all of the units would be the same, three bedrooms, two and a half bath, 1,600 square feet. All units would have modern finishes, including central HVAC, in-unit washer and dryers on the third floor, as well as that outdoor balcony, as I mentioned. The proposal requires several departures from the zoning ordinance. The rear yard setback on this property, as measured from the east lot line, is 40 feet. Obviously, the two buildings that are facing east would be much closer. They're approximately 12 and a half feet from that east lot line. The applicant is not proposing a subdivision because this is going to be a rental product. So all units will be available for rent. If this were to be a owner occupied and for-sale product, the, the development would be subdivided and each unit would sit on its own lot. In this case, everything stays on the same existing lot. So the code allows only one principal building. They're obviously proposing 10 multi-unit buildings. Air conditioning equipment is allowed only in the side and rear yards. Because there is no subdivision proposed, some of the buildings will have AC equipment on the sides, specifically the, the AC units that are between the buildings and Daisy Lane would be in the side yard, in the street yard, and that's where the departure is from. Total building floor area allowed for this size of a property is 50, about 58,000 square feet. They are proposing a total of 132,000 square feet, 972 square feet. The building coverage per code on this lot is 50,181 square feet. The total lot coverage is 51,950 square feet. Because there is no subdivision proposed, no monument sign is allowed. However, a normal subdivision would typically be allowed a 10-foot-high sign and an 80 square feet in sign surface, sign surface area. The applicant is proposing one sign that would be appropriate for this type of development. And that sign would be smaller than what is normally allowed for a subdivision. So no more than six feet high and no more than 60 square feet that they're proposing. The application is required to meet the standards for map amendments and for the planned developments. We have provided our overview of the standards in the packet, and staff believes that applicable standards have been satisfied and staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions in the packet. And of those, I would just note the, the condition 13, just to point that out, that there would be no parking allowed on those internal alleyways because they're 18 feet wide and they're meant for a two-way traffic. So, aside from that, staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions.
All right, thank you. We'll start with questions, starting on my left. Commissioner Abwali, any questions for staff?
No questions for staff.
Commissioner Jones?
Demir, do you know if the surrounding communities, if their homeowners associations, are they all under homeowners associations, the surrounding subdivision developments?
Yes, there is an HOA for every part of West Point Gardens.
And do they allow rental options for the homeowners there, the property owners?
I know.
Are they allowed to rent out?
I'm, so, on this plan, you can see the portion of the West Point Gardens that I'm trying to circle here to the southwest of the subject site, I don't believe there's any rental homes in this product, in this area. But there are, I believe, two within the detached townhome portion that's immediately to the south. So that would lead me to believe that the HOA does allow.
That they do allow.
Yes.
And then there was townhomes a little further downward, right? The next one right across?
So within the West Point Gardens, these are townhomes right here. So that's to the southeast. There are some rental units in here because they have to get a rental license. So we, we map them out. We know where they are. So I know there is one or two in here as part of the townhomes. And then I believe one or two of the, as part of these detached townhomes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Miguel?
Demir, where's the location of the monument site? I couldn't see that in the site plan.
It is going to be at the northwest corner right here, I believe.
Okay. I see. Do you have any update on the development of the property to the north, the commercial use?
You know, that's a good question. So one owner owns the remainder of the Memory Care subdivision. This was all lot, I believe, Lot 3. When Memory Care was approved, this was going to be Lot 1. Lot 2 was the detention. And then the rest of it surrounding it was going to be Lot 3. And one owner who also used to own the gas station owned all of that land. They had plans for a car wash right here adjacent to the, to the gas station. And that was going to be the first of several, several developments along Route 20. But we haven't heard anything in a while from them. So I don't believe there's any plans for anything in the area. There was a plan for, for a Starbucks right here at the southwest corner, but nothing.
Anything on the parcel immediately to the east of the subject parcel?
Nothing here either, no.
Okay. Nothing further for the city? Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
No questions.
All right, I have two questions for you. One is, does this meet the design guidelines for the residential portion?
Yes.
My other question, and we can also deflect this over to the petitioner if it helps, but I thought since it's more of a policy or observation question, that looked to you first. Do you know why we're seeing so much market rate housing? Is there a, I think, as we discussed last time, Elgin is well over the minimum percentage required by the state. So we're seeing this again. And is there a state incentive, a federal incentive, or something? The financial incentive, okay.
So, so this is a market rate rental proposal by a private entity, and the applicant can speak to the, the demand within the area that, that led them to believe that this is a proper proposal at this time. What you were referring to earlier is the fact that the city has, according to the, some of the studies that were done recently, more than 50% of the housing stock within the city is considered affordable. And so, some projects that come forward are of that nature. They're affordable housing developments. Others are market rate. You know, this is one of those market rate developments. The, one of the other ones that was similar to this is the Seasons at Elgin project that's at the southwest corner of Hops and Randall. That's also going through the approval process right now. I, I think every developer will kind of have a different risk level for their, you know, development. And so it really depends on utilities and other available housing stock in the area and so forth, so.
Okay. Well, maybe the petitioners can also respond to that. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, if you're on the petitioner team, now's your opportunity to join us at the lectern. And again, feel welcome to tell us your thoughts.
Good evening. My name is Carmen Grotace with Global Builders, C-A-R-M-E-N-G-R-A-T-A-C-E. We're located at 2803 Butterfield Road in Oak Brook. We decided to do something with this property. We had started construction from a, from a developer, real estate developer that owned it before. It was kind of like an eyesore that was sitting there for some time. So we decided to reach out to the, the city and the Department of Community Development and get some ideas on what the best use would be for the property. So after probably about a 12-month timeframe, we came up with the current site plan, which is 64 units of townhouses, not apartments, 64 units of townhouses. And the current vacant vacancy rate in Elgin is .03%. So we're definitely in dire need of the actual market rate apartment or market rate townhouses. Also, a couple of things to keep in mind is interest rates are climbing, right? Anybody with a HELOC or a, you know, trying to obtain a mortgage, your interest rates are going through the roof. So it's very difficult, you know, with the, with this development, it would be a fixed rate, a fixed market rate, not a low-income housing or affordable housing deal. And, you know, you would have a lease and you would be able to, you know, be fixed into a rate. So we went through extensive discussions with, with Demir as well as the people from the community development. And we've, you know, I have my design team here. I have George Trandle, as well as Abi from Bono Engineering. And we went through, discussed landscaping, signage, lighting, life safety, went through, you know, pretty much every, every question. And that's why it took us so long. Every que, you know, we would, we would design something and then we would, we would go back and forth. And so, yeah, we believe it's going to be a successful development and it is, you know, in dire need. And there is other rental, you know, houses in the area, so. Thank you.
All right, anyone else on your team want to present, or should we go ahead and move into questions?
Hi, I'm George Trandle. I'm the architect for the project. It's Trandle, T-R-A-N-D-E-L. The address is 3100 North Lake Shore Drive in Chicago, Illinois. So as Carmen said, this is 64-unit townhouse project. And the real focus of it was, the driving force of the design was this kind of central courtyard area. And that was to try and help and tie it in with the townhouses and, or across the street. So you can see the, our units are approximately the same size as the units there. We tried to continue some of the pedestrian flow through the site. And then also nice vehicle traffic, you know, we don't have any dead ends or things like that. So you can get in and out of the site quickly. There's more of a traditional design. We went through the community development quite, quite a bit. I think hopefully they're happy with that. And we added a lot of lush landscaping to it. And I, and I think it's a nice project and, and kind of complement the area. So, any questions?
We can certainly move into questions, but another gentleman came with you. Do you have anything to, to present?
This is Abi Ver, is that? Yeah, this is Abi Ver with Bono Consulting, A-B-H-I-V-E-R. The existing site, which, which was earlier designed for different use, they, they provided most of the detention already on the site. With, with our development here, we are increasing the previous by a little bit. All the additional detention that is required will be provided on site.
All right, appreciate that. We'll start in the middle. Start with Commissioner Miguel. You have questions for this team?
Can you talk a little bit about the amenities? Are you offering anything besides the rental of the actual unit? You know, what sort of amenities are you offering the tenants?
So we're going to have a little park space over here in the garden. I don't know if we could zoom in, Demir. So in the location, we're going to have a water fountain with some seating and some, some, yeah, so this, this cross here is actually a sidewalk. And we're going to have some hedges around the walkway, roses, as well as a fountain in the middle with some seating. And in terms of amenities, that's, that's pretty much it.
All right, nothing further, thank you.
It'll have landscape lighting, et cetera.
Right.
All right, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, thank you. It looks like a great project. It was nice to see 60, some of them that we've seen have been so small. One of them, they're 400 square feet units that we're seeing. So this is nice to see 1,600. I just was curious about the property management after the property is developed. I looked on your website for your projects. Do you guys just develop them and then continue the property management of the development?
No, we hire property management firms.
Okay.
So we're, as well as the real estate developer, we're also the general contractor. So, yeah, and then we would hire a real estate, a property management company to manage the property.
But you, do you retain ownership?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
No questions.
Commissioner Abwali?
I didn't have a question, but now I do. The property management, is it on-site or no?
No, it'll be offsite.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I just have one question for, for you. Is, in our board packet, there were a couple of response forms that we received that I would maybe characterize as having a, a negative view. Have you seen those? And would you like to respond to those?
I have. So I took a look at the one, and essentially, the person, I forget their name, they had, rose the concern about lowering the, lowering their property value. And I believe it would actually have a positive influ, you know, influence on the property value. Right now, just the state of the market and just what is going on with climbing interest rates, it's not a low-income housing project. You're actually going to be, you know, it's, it'd be easier to qualify for a rental than it would be for a mortgage at 9% plus, you know, 1% rate or whatever it is. So, and it's a great location, and it has just been sitting there, right? And we, I spoke to the neighboring, you know, property owner on numerous occasions. He's very difficult to get in contact with. And I kind of tried to say, hey, how about we develop this whole block, you know, along Daisy Lane? But haven't been able to contact him very much. But we've owned this parcel for a while now. It's been sitting there. And unfortunately, you know, the property around is paying taxes for soil beans, soybeans. And so we're, you know, we're, we're paying a much higher tax rate. So we want to do something with the property. It's a great project. We believe it would enhance the area. Trying to think of the second, second, second letter. I don't recall at this time. But I believe it, oh, I believe it had to do with traffic along Daisy Lane. So we worked extensively with the Department of Community Development. And we asked them, hey, what are you looking for? What will work for you? And that's how we came up with the two entrances off of the private lane, as well as the two entrances off of Daisy Lane for, you know, for the fire lanes and, and traffic in the alleys. We thought that that would be the best. So I've been to the site. I practically lived there since 2005. I go there all the time. The private lane's pretty dead. Daisy Lane is, is pretty dead. So yes, this would, you know, it would increase the action there. But, you know, there's a gas station and there's, you know, a lot of other plans that are going there. So we believe it would definitely increase the value of the current, current homes there.
Okay, thank you. That's probably the toughest question you got tonight. But again, just for the sake of discovery, bringing it to light, and having those who wrote these responses have their, the comments addressed, I appreciate it. I don't have any additional questions for the team, so.
And yeah, I would, I would, I would definitely like, like to answer any questions that they have or any concerns. I'm here to help.
Okay.
Feel, feel free.
We, we appreciate it. So thank you. All right, good evening. Again, to those of you in the audience, we're going to grab the, so I know at least you'll need to be sworn in. Is there anyone else who's here tonight that's going to present that wants to be sworn in? All right, so any of you who weren't sworn in before, you might come on and stand up. Is there in the back? All right, thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. All right, go ahead. Go ahead. So, what I'm actually gonna do is, uh, start with a sign-in sheet. Hopefully, uh, there's three names on here. Hopefully, those are the three of you who just, uh, joined us. So, we've got, uh, Lourdes Ori. All right. Are you going to, I mean, you didn't get sworn in? Are you gonna come on up or are you gonna pass?
Well, the questions I had were addressed.
Okay. All right. Uh, Mr. and Mrs. Valenti? All right. Come on up.
How you doing? My name's Dennis Valenti. I live at 3632 Daisy Lane in Elgin. And my concerns are, according to this, your entrance to the streets are gonna be right out on Daisy Lane. I see no parking for, like, if these people have, um, company come over, are they all gonna park on Daisy Lane? Because we already have a problem, because my house is about right here and the town, I live at the townhomes here, we have our alley and almost every person on the block has an extra third car and they all park right along Daisy Lane in front of our houses. So, now if you're gonna have an exit here and an entrance here, people don't have any other places to park, they're gonna be parked on both sides of Daisy Lane, plus the traffic? Are they gonna put, are they gonna put stop signs up here?
Sir, sir, sir. We, uh, we can hear your, uh, your questions, but I think there may be a microphone there if you're wanting to use.
Yeah. That was my concern about the traffic. And then is each building there, building seven, building two, building one, is that gonna be under, um, a, a separate owner? Are they gonna sell each building off separately?
So, I know at least that, that item was, was discussed. This is one community, this has been.
Okay, one community. So, one developer's gonna own all the buildings.
Right, and rent all those.
There won't be an H, will there be an HOA?
We, we can, um, I mean, go ahead and continue asking your questions. We're gonna give the, uh, developer an opportunity to come up. So, we've got the parking, we've got the HOA.
Parking, HOA, and so he's gonna own all the buildings. And my, that's my concern about, yeah, about the parking and HOA and how's the property gonna be kept up? So.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Um, and then next name on the list is Carmen Urban?
I am Carmen Urban. My address is 225 Goldenrod Drive in Elgin, Illinois. And legally, I can't really say much, but I'm here wearing a few different hats. I'm actually a resident in the neighborhood, um, but also I am the purchasing developer of this community as well. So, um, but I will just say if, um, I am comfortable raising my two children in this community and I live in the community, um, it should show the integrity of the vision of this project. I'm comfortable living here and, um, I just wanna open up with, with saying that, but I'm very limited to what I can say. This land is under contract currently and Carmen Gritasi is the current owner and so he would be answering any questions, but I can definitely offer any support of anybody that has any questions.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I've exhausted the, uh, the sign-in list, but I know that there were at least a couple of the people who swore, swore in. So, what I'm gonna do is just start my way across the room. So, yeah, come on up, ma'am.
Um, my name is Crystal Deoliveira, K-R-I-S-T-A-L-D-E-O-L-I-V-E-I-R-A. So, I hear there is no, um, property management on-site and I hear the worry as well of the, um, lowering the value of the houses nearby. My address is 3644 Daisy Lane in Elgin, Illinois. I will be leaving right in front of the development. So, I do also have the worry about the market value of the homes and my concern is, is there any plan of, uh, continuous development, continuous maintenance of the rental properties in order to keep that value of the rentals so it won't affect the houses nearby?
Okay. We'll, uh, we'll save that question for the developer team, so thank you. All right. Continuing across the room, sir in the back?
My name is Brian Fleeg, F-L-E-E-G-E. I live at 3628 Hyde Park Court, which is actually a little bit further away from Daisy Lane. It's closer to the park, Meyer Park. My main concerns, one is obviously the property value going down by having 64 rentals by homes that the HOAs, we're not allowed to rent, okay? It is against our bylaws. So, none of the HOAs in the area can rent. If there are four rental units, as you said, I would like to know the addresses because I will report them to the HOA. It's not allowed, for a good reason. Renters don't care as much about the land, as much about the homes, as owners. I built my home because I love the area. I moved to Elgin only five years ago, but I love it. This is my home. You know, I, I moved to a different country and I came back and I, I can't think of any other place that I would rather live. But I cannot think how rentals will raise my property value. In two years, my home appraised for $50,000 more than I built it for. This will not help that. I know it won't, because I've seen it time and time again. I look across the country, I look in other cities, I look at the house that I used to own in Bolingburg. As soon as rentals popped up, my appraisal stopped going up. My property value dropped. That's how it works, because renters only stay for a year, maybe two, and then they leave. They leave litter, they leave noise pollution, they have parties. Just down the way, we have a few rental units, not in West Point Gardens, thankfully, but further down. There are college students, four in a unit. They have four cars. They park one on the street, three in the drive and in the garage. Same thing will happen here. There'll be a lot more cars on Daisy Lane, stopping them from being able to park, buy their own home that they own, not rent. They'll have parties, because they do. I know, because my dear friend stays in a rental unit where I'm speaking of, right next to a unit where there are four college students. They had a party with almost 300 people just a week ago. They left trash everywhere. Same thing is gonna happen. And with this little area in here, it's a perfect place for an outdoor party. You know, we've had a few problems with teenagers partying in Meyer Park, leaving bottles, breaking bottles. We have dogs, we like to walk around, but we can't with broken glass. Same thing is gonna happen. That is my concern. That is my true concern. Owners care more about the land than renters do. There are plenty of places that people can build rental facilities for people who can't afford to own, but for those of us who saved and worked as hard as we have to own, leave our areas for the owners. Let us all work hard to own and love the land. I wanna be here in 30 years. No one there will. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? All right. We'll close the, uh, public hearing portion of this petition then and take the, sir, you can come on up now as your opportunity. Um, I had, uh, four questions, I think, that were on the list and just for the sake of not introducing new testimony, if we can, uh, kinda try to stick to those. So, I'll, uh, see what you've got on your, your notepad there and then, um, if there's anything that, um, is remaining, I'll bounce that off, yeah?
I wanna thank, um, the neighbors for coming. I really appreciate all their comments. I could completely understand and relate to everything that they're saying. Uh, this development will be a rental. There's gonna be four parking spaces per unit. Anybody parking on Daisy Lane shouldn't be parking there. I don't know if the city could put up some toe, you know, toe signs, but there should be no parking there. Is there, um, get-togethers in parks? Yes. Could we prevent them? No. We love this development. It's gonna increase the property value and it's just, it's just that simple. Do renters care as much as owners? I would have to say that, you know, being, you know, essentially the owner of this project, I care, right? There's not a, there's not enough units to put a onsite property management person, but, you know, there'll be rules, regulations for the property and, you know, if there's an issue, they'll have to call and then we'll, uh, we'll address that issue. You know, we don't know how long some people are gonna run, you know? At the end of the day, it's much easier to rent something than it is to buy. Today, you have a first mortgage and you've got, uh, home equity line of credits with variable rates that go up and down and, um, you know, I would say for somebody that would like to live in a property like this, it's more, it's more balanced, it's more safe than having rates jump up and down than, you know, obtaining a, a high-risk mortgage these days. But, um, I, I completely understand, uh, everything that these people are saying and I thank you very much for coming. Feel free if there's any other questions that, uh, that I could answer.
The only other question I had written down was, is there an HOA? And I think kind of by, by definition, there would not be.
Yeah, so HOAs are only, uh, homeowners associations. So, there will be no homeowners here. So, it'll be ran, ran by a reputable, uh, local property management company. And, you know, if there's any issues relating to garbage or anything like that, those things will be addressed immediately. It's not like the property is just gonna be managed by a company and they're never, never gonna come by. We have hedges, you know, all this, this park, there'll be lined hedges there. These sidewalks will have lined hedges, there, there'll be, you know, there'll be people on, you know, onsite doing plowing, doing maintenance, doing, you know, lawn mowing. I mean, there'll be, there'll be people there consistently, so. Yes, it's not just gonna be an abandoned rental that people can just go. I mean, people throw parties all the time. You can't, you can't control it, you know? But, um, at the end of the day, there's gonna be strict rules.
All right. Thank you.
For the research. Thank you.
All right. So, we look back to staff. Appreciate everyone, um, asking questions and presenting tonight, so now's our opportunity to, to hear if, uh, staff's got any follow-on from our, what we've heard.
Yeah, there was a question about, uh, which properties, uh, are for rent, if the city knows to provide those information. So, it looks like the city has issued rental licenses to five properties in the area, uh, two immediately to the south, addresses, uh, 3611 and 3620 Daisy Lane. And then in the townhomes to the southeast, there are 225 Garden Drive and then 220 and 200 Longview Drive. Those are the properties that the city has issued rental licenses in the past.
All right. Besides that, is there?
Besides that, uh, nothing further to add. I mean, we, staff does believe that applicable standards are satisfied. Again, this requires an amendment to the annexation agreement and some planned development, um, as a map amendment, the zoning change from PAB, Planned Area Business, to PMFR, Planned Multifamily. Uh, staff recommends approval, subject to the conditions of the packet.
All right. Thank you for that, uh, that closing. So, at this point in time then, the chair will entertain a motion for these petitions, which are 21-23 and 24-23.
Chairman Cox, can I ask a question of the city?
You may.
Uh, DeMire, uh, actually, two things. First, I forgot to ask before, uh, is there, are there any, uh, plans for improvements to, uh, the intersection of 20 and Shannon Parkway?
Um, to that intersection per se, I don't believe so. I think there are larger plans for the widening of Route 20, that this, uh, is in the vicinity of, in the vicinity of that, but those plan, improvement plans, uh, have not been finalized. They, they still need to go through engineering process, so, uh, it's, it's uncertain what type of improvements would be made to Route 20 along the corridor.
Okay. And then, um, somebody mentioned, uh, parking along Daisy Lane. What would the city's, uh, response be with respect to? Um, I, I know you already have a condition in there about no parking along the private roads inside the parcel. What about if we expanded that to no parking along the, uh, north side of Daisy Lane, uh, for the length of that parcel?
I don't think the residents that live to the south would appreciate that. It sounds like just from the testimony tonight and just from, uh, observing the, the site, you know, visiting it several times, there are cars that currently park on Daisy Lane and those are probably either residents or visitors, uh, of those detached townhomes to the south. So, it would, that would have a negative effect on those residents. Uh, and normally, parking is allowed on all city streets unless there's some restrictions due to, um, you know, leaf pickup and, and, you know, snow plowing and those types of things. So, generally, parking is allowed on city streets and so, um, I don't think we would would this, we would view this street any other than any other street in the city.
But, um, the residents would, could, could continue to park on the south side. My, the concern is if you allow this parcel to develop and there's parking along the north side, can, would, would there still be enough room for two-way traffic?
Absolutely. So, the, the road is a 30-foot wide roadway that allows for, um, on-street parking and two-way traffic, even if, uh, if you allow for parking on one side and not on the other, you would still have adequate, you know, space for two-way traffic. Um, the, these townhomes were designed to have four parking spaces per unit, so that sounds like that's more than what the, uh, townhomes to the south have. And they are required only three, so in theory, every unit has one parking space more than what they're required. So, um, i- if there is any spillover, uh, during very limited times, uh, it, it would be no different than any, any other similar community in the city.
So, just to summarize, you're saying that there would still be adequate room for two-way traffic even if parking was allowed on both sides?
That's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other discussion from the commission?
I, I have just a question for DeMire.
Mr. Lopez.
I must've missed it, DeMire. How mu, how wide is, uh, Daisy Lane?
Normal city street is 30 feet wide. Back curb, back curb.
Back, back, okay. Thank you.
Anyone on my left? Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Awali? All right, then we are back to the request for a motion for these two petitions.
I think, based on the, um, quality of this project and the size and the fact that there will be rules and regulations, I think it's a good project and I move to recommend that City Council approve Petition 21-23 and 24-23, subject to the conditions outlined within our packet and to adopt as the findings of the commission, those findings also provided within our packet.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Awali?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
No.
Commissioner McGala?
Um, yes.
Commissioner, Chairman Cox?
Yes.
The motion is approved 4 to 1.
That's our recommendation to City Council. So, thanks for coming this evening. All right. Item G. You know, we'll, we'll give the chamber here a moment. Item G, other business. Uh, anyone on the commission have any business? If we can just ask if you're, yeah, if you're done with your petition? All right. Thank you. Uh, my only question for, um, staff or maybe your request is, at some point, um, is it possible to help educate the commission on, um, how, how properties and how projects can affect others with regard, especially since we so often hear dollars and cents?
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to find some, there's been, obviously, over the years, there's been a number of, uh, research articles that have been published by various entities, universities, um, associations of realtors and, and various other, other communities and stakeholders. So, I'll try to find, there's, I'm sure there's plenty of other documents out there, uh, in terms of studies and, uh, research products that we can provide and I'll try to send some. some links to this commission's, kind of, some reading material. Doesn't mean that it's gonna convince everybody, which certainly don't expect that, you know, that, uh, but at least it, hopefully, these studies provide some facts in terms of, um, you know, prices per square foot of homes in an area prior to a certain development and then post-development and so forth, so.
Yeah. And if those can kind of relate to what we've seen recently, it would be helpful.
Sure.
So, thank you again. We wanna be smart about what we're doing and understand the black and white along with the gray that we get to consider.
Can I add something on that?
You may.
Um, well, I guess, first of all, I'd be happy, I've done those educational seminars similar to that, so I'd be happy to share with the commission. Um, and I think you kind of hit the nail on the head. There's so many factors that go into it when you're evaluating something like that, but I'm also just curious, again, in our role, because sometimes I'm afraid to, like, say certain things. So, we're here for the zoning portion of it. So, does something like that include in our role and our decision-making?
That, that's a, that's a really good point. I think, um, I've been here a few months, uh, actually, over a year and I, in, in, in my opinion, um, I think sometimes some of the questions that we ask are, um, maybe a little bit of an overreach and, and, um, I think, I would also suggest that maybe, uh, Demir, maybe you can look at, at a document that can help, um, educate us as to what we are really here for, uh, and what, what, what is our purview versus, you know, asking how much rent is gonna be for that particular unit? So, that, I, I would, I would appreciate that on, on my end.
So, it's good to brush up on, I think you're, you have a very, uh, pliable commission in front of you and, um, we're wanting to raise our, our knowledge level.
Yeah. And, and, and we can certainly have conversations, uh, following the meeting and everything. The reason we, we highlight the standards for approval with every petition is because that's what the projects are evaluated on. And so, at the end of the day, everybody evaluates these standards on their own and they consider various facts on their own. Uh, but at the end of the day, it's the standards that ultimately should be satisfied for a project to be approved. And if there's a, a fact about a development that would lead you to conclude that one of the standards is not satisfied and is not met, that that means the project doesn't meet the standards for approval and then that leads to a, a recommendation for denial or perhaps modifications to the project to satisfy that standard. Uh, so, so, again, it's debatable what type of facts lead to that analysis, but, um, those are, that's why the commission includes various members that are from different backgrounds and everybody kind of reviews projects on their own, so. But yeah, I'll provide some additional education materials, sort of, sort of a refresher course on, on the roles of the commission and then, uh, the, uh, general, uh, just the guidelines in terms of what's the, the role of the commission.
All right. Anything else? Although, as we can move on to the, uh, the next item on the agenda. All right. Hearing none. We gotta say it, though. There's no one in the chambers, for those of you, uh, at home, but we still need to ask. Public comment, going once, going twice. Uh, item I, summary of pending development applications. Back to you, Demir.
Uh, so, it'll be a busy council meeting this week on Wednesday. The, the Burton Foundation project that was scheduled for, uh, Ju, first meeting in July, uh, was, that city council meeting was canceled due to tornado in, on the west side of Elgin, so that project had to be rescheduled, uh, for this Wednesday. So, the, that's going on. Then, the other, um, multifamily or mixed-use project at twenty-four Airlight Street is also at the city council agenda and then two smaller projects at three forty-five South Acclaim and four fifty Shepherd. Happy to report that the developer of a solar farm over at three forty, uh, thirty-four fifty-one Bowes Road, it's actually a new solar developer. The original one that was presented to the planning and zoning commission, um, decided to walk away from the project, but a different solar developer has, is looking to acquire the property and develop the same solar development on that site. So, uh, the final zoning approval for that project is scheduled, most likely, for the second meeting in August for the city council. And I think that's probably the highlights. Uh, the next meeting, I'll just, as a reminder, is gonna be on the second Monday in September due to Labor Day holiday and we will certainly have the meeting with several items on there, probably, so.
Uh, one thing I'm gonna take a, uh, opportunity here as chair to, to throw this in. When, when I started many moons ago to be on what was the, um, zoning and subdivision hearing board, our then, um, community development director, who we served with here, Mr. Jerry Deering, uh, gave me a book called The Citizen's Guide to Zoning and I highly recommend it. It kind of goes through a few things. Um, I don't know if staff was able to do that at the time or not, but it's, uh, two-hundred and forty-two pages and it actually kind of breaks down the, the process, the nuts and bolts, administration, understanding variances, zoning hearings and the citizens' roles. So, it's a, it's actually a pretty easy read, but, um, I, I do recommend that also to help educate ourselves. Uh, last item on the agenda then is adjournments. Do you have a motion?
I move to adjourn.
All right. Is there a second?
A second.
Staff, please call the roll.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Magala?
Yes.
Commissioner Abouali?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
And Chairman Cox?
Yes.
Our motion is approved.
All right. Thanks, everybody.